This conference will now be recorded.
Mary Benton?
Yes.
Lloyd Colston?
I'm here.
Joanie Curl?
Here.
Carla Gallos? Paisley Howerton? Charles Jennings? Ian Coon? Andy Patton, here. Cody Richardson, here. Okay, I want to make the declaration that this time, planning commission members are asked to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so they might come to a fair decision. Go ahead, Mary.
The Jellies are with in this thing.
Okay, thank you. Public comments, any persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda, speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentation is for informational purposes only, no action, movie tape. Anybody here that has not on the agenda?
We haven't seen them. Have an agenda.
I do have an agenda here.
No, I mean, there's no agenda that they would publish.
Yeah, it was posted online, or it appeared it was, I didn't see it until today, so we don't have one in the room. Okay.
We got it on the screen.
Got it on the screen, okay. Does that answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. What's that?
Need to have.
We usually do. Not sure. So, okay, moving on, consent agenda, meeting minutes, we receive those in the email. Anybody see anything that needs to be changed? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting.
No move.
Thank you. Go ahead, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Lloyd. Any other discussion? So you know the discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Apprehension? Okay, moving on. To the, we're supposed to be at a public hearing. We need to hold a public hearing to consider the advisability of vacating Compass Point Drive within the replat of Compass Point Edition. I have a motion to enter a public hearing.
Enter motion, enter a public hearing.
Thank you, Cody, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Public hearing, Josh, I'll hand it back over to you.
All right, this is a request. You probably remember Compass Point, there was a replat.
In February that we did.
Fortunately, when the plat was done, it was missed, that Compass Point Drive was supposed to be a private drive. And it did not get caught until it went to the rest of the streets. And so I'll take partial blame for that at least. But today, this is just, so basically, we were just cleaning up that error. The intent of it was that that would be a private drive and the Jellies would maintain that property. So basically, we're looking at the same sort of factors that we looked at before. You got county on three sides of it, mostly agriculture, and then you got the apartment complex to the east. I did run this through the technical advisory committee, like I usually do for vacations. There wasn't any real issues as long as utilities that were already there were maintained, intention. And that emergency and utility vehicles, they were still able to get onto the streets. When I drafted the ordinance, it's going to say something to the effect of that we will retain utility and access, so that should take care of that concern. Proper notice was sent out to everyone within 200 feet of the property, and actually 1,000 feet of the county ones. I believe based on what we talked about during the public hearing for the plat, that having this as a private street won't injure any private loss or private rights. And the public will experience a great loss as a result of this not being an open street. Again, it's not open only in any really who actually controls it. But for the most part, the Jellies have it opened up and it's not going to be restricted for travel. That just, it's just a private street that anybody can use. It's a technology almost. This is Compass Point Edition as it stands, not today, this was back a few months. Now they've started construction along there, so that's an older picture, but just wanted to give you an idea again of what this area looks like. Of course, this is the property, and based on what I've talked about, DAF would recommend that we approve this based on the fact that we retain the utility and access easement over the entire Compass Point. All this outlined in orange. The plat itself, of course, stays in place.
I didn't realize when we were deplating, previously it didn't deplat everything, so I thought that was funny, so I'd.
Yeah, there was no.
Talking about that beginning of private streets.
There was a note on the plat too that said that these streets was a public way. This is not that sad.
I just thought that was planned almost, so this one shouldn't be, should be much as good. So I will, I actually need to leave the public hearing unless somebody else wants to hear from somebody. It has been a motion to enter a public hearing. So who, thank you, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, I will entertain a motion to recommend approval or disapproval for a vacation request to the City Commission of Compass Point Drive within the replat of Compass Point Edition, deserving an access and utility easement over the entire area.
I'm over with, we vacate this, but retain rights of easement and/or access for emergency vehicles.
Thank you, Lloyd, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Probably need a roll call vote on this, but can we voice vote this, Josh?
Let's do it by a roll call, according to.
I'll let you handle that. Okay, Mary Benton?
Yes.
Lloyd Colston?
Yes.
Joanie Curl?
Yes.
Charles Jennings?
Yes.
Andy Patton?
Yes. Yes.
Motion passed, thank you very much. Next, items for discussion, comprehensive plan discussion on parks and recreation. Josh, Andrew, and the back over to you guys.
Okay, we're just continuing the discussion, this week, we want to, this week, this month, we want to move into recreation. We talked quite a bit about parks last time, but we have landed, let's hear from the Arc City Recreation Commission that would like to tell us a little about his programs and sort of the goals that the Recreation Commission might have in the next several weeks.
Andrew, can we get a couple maps up, can you start us down? Please. Good evening, Land Management, Arc City Recreation Director, first year, finishing up that. You know, coming into, I was an outsider coming into the organization, so I think that kind of allowed me to have fresh eyes on both the facility, both the programs, and everything else that is entailed there. Obviously, a lot of learning and things going into that, you know, and in that first year, the worst year, the COVID year, right? So, still trying to figure out what normal is a little bit, but you know, there's a couple things that I realized walking into the door is, you know, there's a lot of property, there is a lot of square footage. And, you know, we manage those opportunities, however, we don't own any of those opportunities, I don't want to get into a lot of that discussion, however. Things that I kind of see or envision and kind of want to forecast out in a hope or a desire to improve, improve for the rec, improve for our community, improve for our region. Once we get down to the Dow Sports Complex, that is on the south end of town, St. Sixth and Lincoln, where we host our Little League football, flag football down there, soccer complex. We also have a Dow facility, which is an indoor hitting range. It also houses our concession, restroom, so on and so forth down there. But this whole lower kind of quadrant looking piece down there is currently where we do a lot of our fall and spring soccer, and as I mentioned, the old football field there on the east of what that Dow building is. And I apologize for you guys on the call, but yeah, Andrew will kind of use the cursor there to help me talk through that. But coming on board, I've learned that we have sprinklers down there. Over this past year, I have finalized the east side, so the northeast field, the southeast field there where we have sprinklers, and we are working to improve the west side. We have a bid, and it's been approved, that we will get the sprinklers up and going there on that west side. However, the northwest side has completely eroded all topsoil. But with those sprinklers there, and with hope and time and future projects of major community partners, we could potentially get some topsoil down there, whether we roll out hay or something like that, just to try to get some growth happening, or it's not just sand and stickers. That's kind of my future, I want that to be some of the best green space we have in Arc City. It should be, it's wide open to everybody, we do have weekend soccer games that are put on, you know, just by the community, they kind of run their own league a little bit. I also have hopes for adult soccer, some things that will create opportunity for adult populations. But that's kind of where I envisioned that for our Dow complex. If you could go to our baseball sports complex, please. Same thing there, we have some amazing facilities here in Arc City, and our sports complex up there was through a bond roughly 11 years ago to get you guys that major complex up there. And it is a huge focal point opportunity for both recreation, for tournaments, for adult populations, you know, it kind of runs a gamut. Obviously, with the soccer field up there, 12, all those pieces are mowed and maintained by the district, and the rec center helps fund some of those maintenance dues through an agreement already established. But just this weekend, we're going to be hosting a baseball tournament there, we're expected to have over 20 teams coming in there. You know, I, so you have a history of me, I'm an image person, I want things to look good. If it doesn't look good, it's a bad reflection of me, the organization, our community, everything else. So I work night and day to try to improve how things are, how they look. You know, if nobody's been out there in the last year, two years, or anything like that, they're putting up new canopies tonight, the last couple days. So we have brand new canopies going up, the great grass is green, it looks phenomenal right now, perfect time for a tournament to be hosted there this weekend. There are a couple desires, and again, these are things that I would hope for down the road, and obviously, there's got to be, you know, things that come into play. But just to kind of give you guys an idea of where I'm wanting things to go. The high school has a garage type thing there on the left side of that, right, just left a little bit more. That piece right there, that is their kind of maintenance storage shed where they house their mowers, their gators, their field equipment, stuff like that. The rec center has a tiny shed, and it is minuscule right about here. That's ours. There is, for me, we partnered with the district to get a new equipment that is phenomenal, it's called a bumper rake, but that really helps us minimize what we need to do, how much people we need. It's a machine, it's kind of like a three wheeler, but it has like four implements on it, so you can just do everything from that one thing. That alone has tremendously helped us in this speed of upkeep and different things like that. But to have some storage out there, currently, all the way at the Dow, we have our baseball association and softball association storage completely on the south end of town. Our complex up here at the far north end of town, obviously, in time bringing those items together, you know, and then also having space to put our gators in, you know, our equipment that we could maintain and hold, whether we partner with the district down the road. You know, those are conversations that I'll have, obviously, but today, you know, I haven't had those, but just to kind of give you an idea of how far spread out our city recreation is at this point. Where there are multiple sections and avenues and so on and so forth. But utilizing the facilities that we had, that this city and community came together on, I hope you guys take an opportunity to get out there, the league games will be going through the end of this month, so no better time to get out there than to see some of those activities. But another thing that I've kind of experienced with these tournaments, we have three entry points. We have a north entry point, which is a sidewalk coming from the high school, we have an east, which is coming over there from, it looks like North 12th Street, and the west one, they're coming in there by that green thing right there. And there is a little shed there that we could have a ticket taker, or you know, somebody as a gate taker. But the north one and the east one, we don't, which everybody uses a lot, people utilize that north parking lot in the high school, and then there's a little bit of gravel parking lot there off of 12th Street. You know, something I realized is rather than having somebody out there under a tent, you're open to elements, you're open to theft, you're open to whatever, if somebody's sitting there with a money bag or something like that. So something very tiny, but things that I've kind of picked up as I travel to different community complexes and stuff like that. Those are just small things that I've noticed that I think would really help kind of solidify what we have down the road. Andrew, if you could go to our main location, they're 225 East Fifth Avenue. And this is the home of what we know right now, our City Recreation Commission, our main facility, which is where we are office, where our original building is. And then, I think it was the early 80s, late 80s, that south gym was an addition built on there. The parking lots to the west are not our, that is our CB bank, we're not allowed to park in there. But that building right there where the cursor's at, and then that north parking lot right across from Fifth Avenue, that is the one piece of property that Arc City Recreation owns. That is the piece right there. So of all things, we own a parking lot. And, you know, albeit not giant, but it is what it is, and it allows our patrons to come in, utilize the facility, and so on and so forth. And of course, we have that east side there on B Street. That facility right there, the south gym, it houses our gymnastics area, it has a basketball gym, it's got shower utilities in there, restroom, obviously. That building is a very nice conducive building for what we have here currently in Arc City with basketball, gymnastics, so on and so forth. The old VFW, the Arc City Recreation Commission right now, as it stands, how many have been in there? How many have had to traverse stairs to go to a fitness class? Okay, first, coming into the job, the building, in my mind, in my knowledge of all grandness there, but is not conducive for a recreation center. You know, our fitness center is downstairs, we have a lot of silver sneakers, elderly aerobics classes, different things like that, where those individuals have to traverse stairs to get to their room to workout. You know, upstairs, you have the basketball gym, you have a walking trail, again, you have to walk upstairs to get to the walking trail, to get, you know, to utilize that. And understanding that it was not built for recreation, in my mind, I'm trying to best create that opportunity where we can come together, make it the best facility that we can. Right now, in the gym and the hallway area, there's no HPA system, so it's, whatever temperature's outside, we're a couple degrees hotter inside. You know, we're using exhaust fans to push air through. Our offices are HVAC, we do have a heater unit in our wrestling room there on the main level, and then in the basement, our fitness center, aerobic room, and then we have like a little rec area, which is currently being utilized through our food program. Those are air conditioning units, or room for spaces. So currently, the roof is outdated, we have plenty of leaks that are happening there when we have moisture outside, we have moisture inside. We also have a, the south wall, in between those two buildings, there's a very small walkway. It is, has a little canopy or carport looking thing that you can walk between the two buildings there. But that south wall of our north building, the Arc City Recreation Commission building, is deteriorating rapidly. And when I first came on, that was my first thing that I witnessed and saw, and said, we've got to fix this. And, you know, looking at figures and finances and so on and so forth, obviously, that is going to be a major undertaking. Major, and then we don't know how much destruction there is within that wall until they start ripping into it. So we don't have a figure, you know, that gets, but at this point, it's as good as it gets. I have a general contractor that I was working with over the past year, and concrete construction, and they have provided a roof replacement, that south wall, what they guessed the best is, and some of the water damage that we've experienced from the limestone on the northwest corner, the northeast corner, the whole south wall that goes from the top of the roof all the way to our basement or men's locker room. There's just, there's a lot of things. And, you know, with that right now, of course, I double checked our figures with inflation of costs of material and so on and so forth, those figures are still pretty accurate. Upwards of three months ago, I think, is kind of where I had that checked again, three or four months ago. But we're sitting at about $400,000, just a little under $400,000, and that would get my gymnasium, or the gym basketball area, air control, climate control, and then would take out our exhaust fans, so that helps some of that moisture control as well. So knowing those figures, you know, I'm trying to thank, obviously, for me personally, I don't think it's a conducive building for a rec center. You know, what is there, what could be in that place if we're not there type thing, you know, trying to spitfire every idea that I can think of. I do like the south gym, I think it's very functional, there's a need for that. But what can I do, or what can we do as a community to come together? A few months, probably six months ago now, maybe, kind of chopped an idea around, and I was talking to a couple people, and it came out, well, we have a couple vacant lots. Like, well, you know, okay, I'm scared of new build, but all you got, let's go, let's get excited about it. And so, you know, initially, it was kind of, my first thing was, what about over by Wilson Park, the north side of Wilson Park, the hospital grounds? You know, it'd be the center point of the city, so on and so forth, but then the more we start thinking about, more start talking about it, the further we get of isolating our rec center places throughout our community. You know, a couple years ago, I came originally from the Cali College, I've been there a number of years, and then came over here. So knowing Cali College, I work in housing, I work in student life over there, there's Carver Park over there. And I know the city has recently, you know, within the last four, five, six years, relinquished rights over to the college for that area, and I know there's some discussion in the paper a couple months ago regarding new build over there. I don't know where they're at with those talks or discussions, but as Andrew moves us over towards Carver Park, I want you guys to kind of envision with me a little bit of what you know happens around Carver Park, and around the Ag Building, and around Parish Park Pool. Okay? If you think like me, I see recreation at a pool, I see green space for recreation outside, I see tennis courts, I see park playground areas, I see the Ag Building, which right now is home to IYQ camp, and we have over 160 people in that right now, this week, we have 170 kids that are in there. If you see that triangle the same as I do, you have a center point of recreation for our community. I understand, new builds are scary, they're expensive. Another thing that was kind of brought to the discussion is, the USDA grant has a rule development that is creating a new cycle, or it's getting ready to be in a new cycle here this next year, within the year. And depending on where our census data comes back, we have an opportunity to match up 55%. And if we're below 12,000 people, which I don't want to be below 12,000, but darn it, if we get a 50/50 match on something like that, we might have something special for our community that we may never have again. And with those dollars, you know, maximizing those, I think that as a community entity, as a tax base, you know, organization, that is what our primary purpose is, to provide back to our citizens and to our community. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion about that pool as well. I know those findings are coming back, you know, soon, and whatever those come up with as well. But I also want you to kind of forecast too, we have the second, is it second phase of the hike bike trail? That right there is also going to be starting right there. So all of those tying together from here, and potentially, if it goes into that third phase that takes you all the way up towards the high school, that goes to your complex, that goes to your centerpiece of our community, which is recreation right here, with our potentially new facility, our pool, Ag Park, all the way down to our 6th Street soccer complex at the south end of town. So with all those things tying together, you know, my eyes, I dream big, you have to dream big, or you won't have any dreams. So Carver Park is to me kind of number one. Another thing that popped up is, we just got rid of the old wastewater plant, that's no longer there, and there's an open lot there, that is city property. My home, still city. There is space there. So you do lose a little bit, you'd be a little further away, but again, that's kind of still centered down there around, you know, that area of our town. I started getting excited, I get really excited, and I'd like to move and, you know, dance around, I'm already dancing in front of you guys. But thinking of these things, went and had a couple meetings of discussion, and met with city manager and Andrew Lawson, and, you know, trying to figure out, is this something that could ever, you know, is this feasible or not? Is my idea, do we need to shut it down, or do we need to keep dreaming? The conversation went really well, obviously, nothing's promised or anything else, but, you know, it's something that people are willing to listen to, obviously, or I would not be here. Second to that, I approached Cali College, obviously, it's their property, met with the director of finance there, and they were also positive about the discussion. Okay? And, you know, there's kind of two parts on their side, which I don't want to speak for them, but they also have a fitness center. And if tax dollars go to that fitness center, and tax dollars go to the recreation fitness center, why can we not come together and have one amazing facility? You know, and again, I can't speak for where they're at, or what their plans are down the road, until we really, you know, delve into those deep conversations. But then, you know, when they were positive about it, and they were like, hey, we're open ears, let's talk, and so now I'm on the minute, I'm ready to go, I'm ready to start, you know, laying bricks out tomorrow. And so it leads me to here, I guess, and that's kind of my spiel, if you will, but for the future of recreation and opportunity in our community, we have an opportunity right now pending, and I guess I should have gave it a second part of that. If we're over 12,000 people, if we go 12,000, 12,001, you know, the USDA grant, rule development, will have a 35% matching instead of 55%. So there's pretty significant difference there, but there's still opportunity. And if we don't take the opportunity with our feet or hands right now, then we miss it. And, you know, whether there's COVID dollars that are out there that can go towards something like this, or whether there are, whatever the other 6 million that just got posted out there, I wouldn't care for the name of something else. But, you know, if there's opportunity, whether it's a matching thing, whether it's community partnerships, I find it very hard that if the city is going to be, you know, a positive light on this type of opportunity. The college, which is another major, major taxation base for this community, is positive within this idea. And we get, you know, conversations with the school district and see how we can partner with some of them, and there's been very light discussion because they're kind of, you know, I don't see where they fit in quite yet. So we're trying to feel everything out, but if all of these entities come together and say, hey, we have something that could make our town, you know, one notch higher in an opportunity, and it centralizes everything. We stop taxing two people on one thing, we put one thing and make it big. You know, I think the greatness of what our community is, when they see that vision, and when they get excited about something that is going to improve for years down the road, they're on board. And I find that super exciting. And I guess that's kind of why I'm here, is to throw you my ideas and hopes that you guys can kind of see how that brings things together, and not necessarily how it takes things apart, or moves things away, it separates different things. You know, what would happen with that building, I don't know that answer yet, you know, how do we get from point A to point B, I don't know that answer yet either. But, you know, with partnerships, those facilities can still be utilized, you know, we would still keep that south gym, that's a very important aspect of what we have with basketball, extra gym space, so on and so forth. But if we're at Carver Park, and we put three more courts in, or we move and we get. But if we're at Carver Park and we put three more courts in, or we move and we get uh, you know, pickleball courts inside and then it doubles as racquetball courts or, or, you know, the, the, the options right now are so widespread that I can't even fathom it. But I'm still excited because I know that, that there is excitement within our communities to do something that will make positive impact for years to come. And, and that's kind of, and I'm not sure that's, that's what I got. Yes, sir.
Um, the rec center on, on Fifth Street, is that where the group plays pickleball?
Yeah, they're in the south gym, but yes.
South gym.
Yep.
So that, that facility gets a lot of use then because those guys play pickleball a lot.
Yes.
And that's Fitback.
Mm-hmm.
Fitback.
Yeah, East Fifth Avenue, Fifth Street, so yeah, but I'm trying.
I like your energy and I like your, your, your plan. Um, I like, I like everything you're saying. It's, we, as a community, leaders of the community really need to manage money carefully. I think if going forward, we are more careful than, than we have been in the past, I think we could bring some of these um, these things to fruition.
I appreciate that. And one thing that I think, you know, if those matching dollars are there and something like this with those partnerships, both, both, you know, um municipality wise as well as, as uh industry, and it doesn't cost taxpayer anything additional, I mean, I think that loan would be just major. You know, and I, I think if we hit those matching opportunities, it, it does great things. So, and obviously, you know, down the road, because I'm seeing it in where we're at right now, is uh, you know, maintenance costs, deferred maintenance. That's where our money has to go. Not shooting too big that we, we, we cost ourselves too much down the road. You know, I think that, that, you know, that's why everybody else is here to make sure that I don't get too excited and dreaming. But uh, you know, knowing that there is, there has to be something at the end that says this is within our, our abilities financially and, and responsibly for our community. I mean, I, I get that too. I, I do get that. Yes.
I, and we had a little discussion on this based on what goes in that facility to, for it to be a revenue source as well with tournaments. Because as you said, we're proposing tournaments at the softball field, which is a very nice softball baseball field. Um, a revenue source for the city, which is, I think, for volleyball, basketball, whatever. We have to always keep looking at that as well. I, I like the providing things for the community, but we have to also to survive. A small rural community needs to have revenue sources, so outside of.
That's a critical challenge for us to host maybe tournaments because of their size and volleyball tournaments, same way. New facility, that changes all of it. That's all of a sudden on the table for us to do.
Maybe a restaurant.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. I, I will say, I'm also chairman of the record, so I've been in these meetings with, with Landon. But uh, this ties back to all the other things that we've stacked here with this that I talked about for how many months now? Bringing in new businesses, bringing in new industry, bringing in new people to live. This just helps with that quality of life that affects every one of those things we've been talking about here for six months. So this just ties appropriately to that.
Landon, I fully concur with everything about that they mentioned as far as the revenue and, and bringing revenue and being um good servants of the community as well as um watching how we spend. But uh, the grants that you're talking about, are those, are we eligible for those if we, if we fix the south wall of the current building? And is that on the historic register?
Billing is not, to my knowledge, um, but Andrew had actually mentioned that. So maybe with the grants, are you aware if, if it is new build or if it is restoration?
I would not have to research that. I know a lot of communities use USDA rule development for new construction because there are certain federal requirements that, I mean, ADA is going to be a big challenge for renovating that facility. We're actually going to go visit on Thursday after the appointment before. I've looked through the ADA transition recommendations. I don't know if you looked at them, but that's probably the biggest laundry list of stuff we've seen together at City Hall. So, I mean, they go from point of admission to terms. I mean, I don't remember the estimate you told me, but the kind of numbers that the rec commission is looking at on fairly small repair, it doesn't get out of line to start looking at new construction. It's not necessarily that much more expensive.
They started adding everything up. It's going to be, the all of the things that need to be done.
Well, that's now, so now where you go ten, twenty, thirty acres, it's the same thing a library is running into and some of our other facilities. So, you know, that's something we'll have to look into. But the, the USDA program is actually a loan program, but it breaks out over forty years. And I know Landon was kind of looking at his finances and we were thinking at a certain level that it would be something that would be attainable within their budget, especially if other community partners are going to join in on the project. So it would, it would need a lot more research and study. That's one option. There are some other things out there. There's also the C D V G grants. So there's a track that you can use to build community facilities. Udo actually just got one of those. They're building a combination recreation center library. Um, and that's, I think it's more like eighty percent pay. It also depends on your population level and some other factors. Um, and we've kind of reached out to library a little bit and said, hey, if this is something that develops, do you think there's a potential that you would be interested in partnering? Because it might be easier for two entities to work together to get one combo facility than the tragedy around there. And we're still feeling that out, but location will detail a lot of it. But we just got to get, I think you've got to be more creative about reaching across the aisle to other entities and working together to get these things. Because it is only getting more expensive to build and we have to be cognizant of what our community can support. But you also can't string long facilities for fifty hundred years if I were to put my major money in the loan.
Carol.
Well, just, they, they argued that boards never go away, they just are in the stratosphere.
Right.
And uh, certainly given more of, or uh concrete structure to this, but I just, it's kind of sitting here huge because uh about ten to twelve years from that, the gentleman who talked about this community meeting, what you just described, a YMCA type house facility in our Kansas City, that's ridiculous. But it is so ridiculous, it's not at all. And it is actually functioning. What, what moves us forward to, and I mean, we're in the twenty-first century, but we want to be want to be meaning out of all of this and saying, we don't want this to be something that twenty forty has to fix for our community city. So it's, it's intriguing, but I just kind of feel like that idea had merit at this branch of which time. And it needed a set of flags and a different voice to give it new life. This, it was thrown out there more than a decade ago and everybody thought, that's ridiculous because we have to be ready to find out now that not only is it aged the facility, but it is certainly, we've moved a lot of long ways towards any of these issues. We've learned a lot more about how those structures, and it's maybe time for us to think about uh how we move that from regular to action. So, so.
And we, it's made of a facility like that differently than it turned fifteen years ago as well. And that's, yeah, maybe fifteen, twenty years ago. Sure. Sir, when we used to play basketball, I was at wrestling, basketball. Some people use weights in the stairs. I was at, that's not what we do in the rec center, just not. Something's changed first.
Any other questions, Scotty? Thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lammy.
While we're on this topic, I wanted to.
I think I'll say something.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to, I was trying to, I'm not an artist, this is horrible. But what I gathered from what, what you're talking about, about uh a more centralized theme was basically moving that facility from east, central, you know, downtown, that, that over to like the ancient chestnut area or the Fort Washington area.
So depending on where you bring that street in, it, it potentially could still be Fitback. Because that's where our skate park is, you know, it's all right there with the pool, depending on, you know, entry and parking and stuff like that. So, I mean, yeah, you're flipping from two blocks on the east side of our main drag center street to, you know, five to six blocks west of Sun Street on the exact same east-west route. Depending on interest point. I mean, if you came in off eight three, yes, it would be just south of Chestnut.
Hey, Josh.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I'm sorry. I should say, I'm sorry.
You're fine. There's, there's two more topics in chapter five and definitely I can break them off. Uh, one of them is natural resources. Internally, staff has talked about even taking this one and moving it to a different chapter. But right now it's in the same chapter. When we're talking about natural resources, we're talking about what's physically there. So we mentioned uh Calwall, that area, this is an area we have off to the southeast. It's not something unfortunately that has a whole lot of access. But it is a resource to our community. Also have a Chaplain Nature Center on the west side of town. Great trails out there, you know, good access to see the river, which is obviously a big resource for our community. But it's, it's obviously also outside the city and is controlled by the, which is the auto loan society. Um, the other things, of course, that are naturally occurring are, of course, the two rivers. This community would not be the community it is today if it's just those two rivers come together where they do. If you've heard anything about the history of founding of the city, there's actually some interesting stories regarding that. I believe there was some confusion about where a certain group went and some of them went Windfield area where the Tinsapit comes into the Walnut and that's where they thought they were supposed to be. And then there was another group that came down to the junction of the Walnuts and the Ark. So, but it's, it's kind of an interesting story and we'll get into that. Um, of course, because of those rivers, we have uh great aquifers, uh which means we have to our swamp. We've got, what is it? Seven wells that we've got, six or seven wells? On the, seven. If I ask line of somebody in this room, they'll know the answer to that. Um, but we're able to get abundant art historical as well, just because it's so close there. We have these two rivers right next to us. Uh, in the future, if it absolutely was required, we could obviously look at the Walnut side as well if we needed to. We can get into that when we talk a little bit more about our infrastructure and later topic. But uh, then of course, because of those rivers, we also have floodplains. Um, floodplains are something that's, according to this, been regulated by the city since the early eighties. That's when we got our first flood maps that entered into the flood insurance, federal flood insurance program. It's called P M, but uh, we have actually adopted another version uh recently, it's two thousand and ten. And the flood maps actually are going through revisions again. Kind of slowed that process down, but it, so it's probably going to be in the twenty twenty-five range before we see them. Uh, but the neat thing about the newer flood plain maps is they're now looking at all the digital modeling and stuff. So they're going to be more accurate. And because of the models that they use, they can plug in interesting things like past events. When they were here last talking to us, we were venting up recovery from the two thousand and nineteen floods. And so that flood caused us to learn some new things that we've never seen before. We have flooding in areas that aren't floodplains. So that would be one area that will affect. And there are at least some areas that are in flood plains that experience absolutely no flood. So there'll be a little bit of that back and forth, but floodplains are a reality for this community. Because of the river, so they have the causes and they have the losses. Um, but they also affect how we can develop. So don't want to end on a downer, but I kind of know that. Anyway, so that's the natural resources, not, not a huge chunk of the comprehensive plan. But it is important to recognize that we have these things that are naturally occurring that we can use. We could even go a little bit farther. We've got the fishing lake uh east of town, the wonderful waterfalls out there. And of course, Windfield City has their city lake. It's also another opportunity for us. And then, of course, if you cross over the border, you can pick up to, to call all this stuff that's right in this area. Of course, you got the flood hills off our. So unless somebody has questions about that, I want to move on to the last topic. Move right along. All right. This, this one is historic resources. The plan from two thousand and thirteen talked about the nineteen eighty-three National Register survey that was done for the downtown district. In two thousand and seventeen, the city applied for and received a, what it was six a grant to redo some of that survey. So we redid the survey, learned some new things about some of the buildings. Since nineteen eighty-three, a number of them have demolished for various reasons, so kind of changed that. But also a few buildings are kind of newly eligible. And we briefly talked about the rec center. Also, it was one of the buildings that was part of that survey. I can't remember. I believe it was considered non-contributing, but I don't remember the reason. I have to look at that. Survey itself, I don't know for sure, but it's not currently on the register. But it has certainly some aspects that, that could qualify it for that if we want to look at that. Right now, um, kind of a newer project that, that the city is also working on, the State Preservation Board, I should say, specifically is working on, is a downtown walking tour. There was one done, I believe it was two thousand and five. A little brochure was made up, allowed people to go downtown. For the brochure, while they're walking through the, the downtown, as I lost eight, they learned a little bit about each of the buildings. So this time we decided to get that updated. There's some, we found some misinformation that part of it was discovered with the survey. Part of it has been discovered from old traveler articles. Uh, Boss Ferber is the chair of the board and being a former traveler, foremost, that have the he has access to all these archives and knows where to look. So he's, he's found a lot of really good information on some of the buildings that we've never known before. And so we decided to put this together. We'll update that for in a brochure. Actually, we got a grant to do this too. And in addition to that, we were creating a web map, not too dissimilar from this, only it'll show the, the same tour, kind of a tour form on website. So you could actually scroll through it as you're walking and see the pictures, see a little bit of text about each thing and see it on the map before you park your truck. That's fine. And if you're using a tablet or cell phone, it's GPS, you see where that to make sure you're in front of the correct building. But I, I think it's, that's, the downtown area is kind of an important part of our heritage. We've got buildings that date, we're back into the eighteen, these uh Security National Bank where uh financial places. Okay, I heard of that one. That, that building is eighteen eighty-nine. Uh, there is some that are actually a little bit older even, the AC office building, this one's eighteen eighty-six. Um, and several others are kind of in that general time frame. But yeah, we have a lot that are from that area. Fortunately, some that are from that area have been the victim of neglect. Uh, then we've got a whole bunch of them that are a little bit newer, like the twenties. We've discovered, our pretty darned machine. When this survey was done in the nineteen twenties, really wasn't that old. It was sixty years old. That's not what it had to do or we didn't think so at the time. Um, but today those buildings are out. So even, even those in the twenties are starting to get up there in age. Uh, City Hall is one of those. It was, it was built in nineteen eighteen, nineteen nineteen timeframe. So it is also over a hundred years old. The National Register will actually accept buildings as young as fifty years old. Now, it needs to have some other qualifying characteristics, but fifty years old is nineteen seventy-one. And then even some of our new. And then even some of our new buildings in the downtown area are actually that. I'm not suggesting necessarily that they be added to the register, but. They're technically eligible on that. So we've, all I have to say is we've got a lot of interesting things downtown. Historic district is an important part of the town. It's where some of our small businesses are located. Cities looking into, and we kind of talked about this when we talked about housing, to putting some housing up into the upper floors. And. And all sorts of different people interested in doing that, but there's lots of hurdles that you have to go through in order to do that. There is tax credits that will help with that, but you're not going to cover certainly everything. The city is going to strongly continue to work on that. I don't think I have anything else to say about historic, but that's a question.
What's the correlation in the colors? What, what is on the historic register?
The green ones, can you open it?
Yeah, green is contributing and yellow is non-contributing.
Just can't remember exactly what my color credits were. Okay, so if it's red, it's not that it's not contributing, it's just it wasn't.
It's not in the district as of now, but it's something she surveyed that could potentially be included.
The green ones were contributing to the historic districts, so they're eligible for tax credits and everything. If it's non-contributing, it's not technically eligible for those tax credits. What makes it non-contributing is either it's too new. It wasn't the time to certify. Or it's been altered, so much so that it's lost its historic character now. Some of the non-contributing buildings can actually, that could be undone. They can become contributing again, some of them may not. Some of those will have to actually be, have to be listed under their new structure. And there's probably a few examples in our downtown district that something was modified from the original thing, but the modification is considered part two. Now I realize that historic district brings its negative connotations. It has a few requirements you have to go through of your process. But keep in mind too, that none of those requirements are binding, those are guidelines. It does require you to go through the process. And you, if you want the tax credits or the grants, then yes, you would have to be. Fully. But there's always a way to get past those. We've had a few cases over the years since I've been open to start warning before I was over the planning commission. Where somebody has appealed the action of the board or the state ship, oh, the historic preservation office. And they were allowed to do whatever was there originally, once you, they just have to appeal to the city commission. They had a hearing and then they got a.
Charles. Comment? I just was going to say that, you know, among words tonight, I guess. And since words matter, just. Trying to use words, I'm just up in a area that I've heard just quite say that, that. We talked about the Houston language requirements, then he said the non-re requirements, the guidelines and so many.
Unless you want money.
That needs to be our talking, talk from the perspective of.
Yeah. They're guidelines unless you want tax credits.
Right.
And then they're.
Right.
Pre-actual.
But within a world where we're, we're, we have this. Kind of predisposed negative perception about the whole historic history. And it probably is good to at least introduce it with language like guidelines. And then if it gets, if someone has an interest, right now, we're trying to generate interest. If someone has an interest, we can talk guidelines, but that breaks for important. And then if they want to get into the. Revenue side things, resources, then we talk about, well, then for the money, it comes with my restrictions.
Yeah. I just like to hear it, yeah.
To market it.
I've not heard him referred to as guidelines before. Most of the people who sign up for the historic district for the building is to get those tax credits. So then they do become, now. Pretty accurate on that one, so, but, but yeah, if you're, that's a good way to catch that, not scare everybody to that. Well, in fact, another term that's used is standards. It's actually what it's, what we're looking at, what the board looks at on their review is the secretary of the U S Department of Interior's. Standards, not regulations.
I love that. It's more marketable. And community where the first response seems to be. Well, they got all these restrictions and you can't do this and you can't do that, they take control of you. You know, so, so softer language. Might get more of a better audience than those two.
Well, the question I have for, for staff is another historic building, that's cool. What is the status of that plan that you've had out with it? Sold it for a while now, is that back yet?
Yeah.
Is that ready for public?
Supposedly not yet, I mean, we won't be letting this week do these again.
I do get. I did the, the parents final draft, is that for?
The parents' final draft.
How many, what did they draft when they're doing this?
A few.
Well, they have a draft.
Yeah.
So I, I just reticence that because I think that. At some point might tie into our project at the Rex Center. Just, I'm, I'm hearing rumors of numbers that are. I want, so.
There's no a lot of difference from what I'm seeing to fix what's there properly or where it goes and. Just by virtue of it's.
Right. That's, that's why, so. Okay, that's what I wanted to ask, if that's, if that's not ready for public, it's. Okay.
We can, we can break it up again.
It'll definitely be.
Yeah, I figured next meeting we'd get into that. And then also we'll have the brochure that he's talking about done, so I can kind of pass those off. Do a more detailed on the downtown if you'd like to see that.
Yeah, I can, and I can show you the, the map that we've worked on. I think a little bit left of parks and.
Yeah, our meeting is July thirteenth, which is kind of an official kickoff for our one hundred and fiftyth celebration week. So it seemed like a good time to wrap up the historic side of things. One other topic I just wanted to throw out there for you guys to kind of chew on and we can discuss it later. You know, right now we're in sort of a odd, so the city, as he jokes, they own a parking lot. The city owns all the rec centers facilities. But they budget under the school district's authority and under their millivian district. And it's set up their way under state law and both the school district and the city appoint two members of the rec commission. And then those four members pick the fifth at or. And that's, I mean, it's working, I think, I don't think I'll mix it, but it's kind of an awkward arrangement. And so then also the city maintains all these, what, sixteen, twenty parks that we talked about last meeting. Under our public services department. And the burden of those parks is only on citizens of Arkansas City within the city limits. But the recreation program is supported by the wider district, the school district.
And those parks are used by the wider community, just the city limits folks.
So one of the things I kind of stumbled across a few years ago, and we have not looked into it in very great detail. But this seemed like a good time to kind of throw it out for discussion, so we can get some guidance from the planning commission. Because I don't want to waste a lot of time researching if there's no real willpower behind it. Under state statute, there is a way to combine parks and recreation departments under one entity. And as I understand it, doing that would widen that tax base with support of our parks to the larger recreation district. It's, it's a whole process, it would have to go on the ballot. And then it would change the composition of the board, we would appoint, I think it goes to seven, there's a certain breakdown of how they're explained. But part of that process that we'd have to kind of work through and manage, and that's why I think it's a big topic for citizens. Is basically our whole parks department would transfer over under land. So you're talking about maybe actual city employees transferring operates that and equipment and facilities. So there's a lot of research that's to be done, our terms would have to look into it in depth before we ever go down that road. But you know, in a five, ten year plan, we're looking at some kind of a grand vision. I think it's something at least to consider, if that's maybe a better mechanism for kind of managing all this and funding it in a fair way. So I just kind of want to let you guys know that's something that's out there that we could look at. But it's kind of complicated, I think some other communities have done this and it's, it's interesting.
The plan says that Hutch, as far as you can tell, is.
Wrong by understanding Hutch, Hutch Recreation is the only one in state Kansas that runs hundreds. And you know, why, whatever, I don't know those answers, but.
There are school districts, so that stuff there, they've got Hayman, Nickerson, Hutch is a school district itself, not much of a.
Okay. And maybe that is.
That is, you're right, their school districts are so chopped up, some, some of the other cities have school districts that are in Hutch Park. So, so that's probably.
Yeah.
So that's proof that it's possible to be done, parks can react, you get.
Yeah, well, I think John Temple County has sort of this model, fire call. It's just interesting, I mean, we have parks and recreation combined into one chapter, even though they're two totally distinct agencies, but they work together. Tony helps stem out the pool, you know, so there, there is interaction. But I think how we're going to organize this in a plan will have to flow a little bit out of, what do we think the future of that is going to look like? Are we going to keep this kind of bifurcated model and just go in that direction? Or are we going to look at something a little bit different? So that's something I'm going to, you know, I'm interested in getting some survey and getting some public input on that before we look too deep into it. But I was just kind of curious what you guys thought or.
I am a big fan of that one, I don't think I have any big secret of that. Or I think that is something we definitely need to look at. It's, that's potential solve number of issues hurt they have and they have soon in the future. So I think it's definitely something that's been scored. Anything else we want to talk about on this chapter before we move on? Again, we can bring back the, we can re-talk about the top of the pool.
Yes.
If you're making one sense, become aware of public document.
What are you talking about, Perris Park or the high school pool?
Perris. Yeah, I think the high school is probably, that's a studies on their pool too. Because it's got its own set of problems.
And my end back to the building and if we don't renovate it, then what, what do we have after you move out? If we.
Those are things that I don't have any interest in today, I mean, I don't have a lot of answers today. But I think, you know. The opportunity, you know, it, it's going to take a lot, one way or another. So you know, what could go in there, there is some very usable space. It's the south wall, you know, the roof right now, those, those two things, but if you can't seal outside elements, it will continue to, to erode or deteriorate. And so I don't have an answer for it, I mean, I'm not afraid to say I don't know, but you know, I think. There's potential for that building, but I don't see it as a long-term recreation center. You know, if I could change anything, I would, but you know, I don't have those answers, you know. Originally, it was kind of like, well, the library needs a bigger building, well, I didn't realize that theirs was also deteriorating. But ours is bigger, you know, and it has a giant floor wood space, you have, you know, second story. And then learning down the road, that, that wouldn't be that simple fix, you know, so long story short, I don't know.
Do you know what our shelf life is on that building? You know, start putting some money into it.
I do know.
We need more event centers, I mean, you know, what we have is always busy. For, for weddings and whatnot, you know. That's just what I'm thinking, all of these places all around the country are. Making some really good money and, and being available for that kind of. So I can hope it would be something that would be up for sale, you know, down the road, but. City just has another empty building.
That was a concern that Brandon expressed to us and, and I agree, everyone just leave another empty building that just sits and falls apart. So yeah, that needs to be part of our plan, need to figure out, but do we.
And we need, and we do need more pickleball courts, we need everything that we have painted for pickleball. I mean, that's a, that's a huge thing.
I've had really good conversations with the group, I guess we'll call them. I'm trying to push them to be a little bit more than a group. And I think there, there's going to be about four of them that are going to strongly take the lead. And I hope that they will soon approach city and potentially get after those Wilson Park courts. You know, I know they're there and I simply put, the test association and longer cares for those courts. But if it's as simple as dropping those nets five inches to make those playable courts, you know, cutting those hand cranks off and lowering them five inches should be a very simple fix. You know, who does those labor and those things, you know? I've also voiced to them that it has to be more than a want or a desire, there has to be teeth in it on their part. You know, not saying that they haven't put a hundred percent of the bill, but they need to be able to help do something. And I've offered them to lead programs for our recreation, you know, youth clinics, I told clinics run a tournament. If we have facilities indoors, we, we could run a weekend tournament if we have, you know, inclement weather. You know, there, there's opportunity, the, the lines are painted at Perris Park Courts, you know, it's shaded over there. So I, I've had conversations with them and I expected it already this week, but I haven't seen it. So there, there's a couple of people that are working and they've asked me to soon come and we would probably approach Mr. Fraser about some opportunity at Wilson Park. And I know, you know, even trying to push them to, to create something during. The, the event, the Takaala with those courts being right there as well. So I, I think if, if they will take some ownership. It, it can maybe begin to move in, in the direction that they hope to have.
I am, I play at those Wilson courts every day. And. Yeah, pickleball players haven't been there yet. There's a two inch difference between tennis and pickleball on, on the net height. So there, there's kind of be a way to, to move the, and that's easily back and forth. I've been talking to Aaron O'Donnell a lot about adopting those courts, you know, getting him to, to take control of those courts. He knows how to get grants. He has a rotation system for all the courts in town. But there was a contract made and Louderback was even on the contract where, but that was when there were six courts. Okay, we, it's not such a big thing now, we've got two courts. But it's going to take about a hundred thousand dollars to, to fix them, to bring them up to where they should be. Because that old stuff needs to all be ripped out, the grass needs to be taken out in there. But Aaron O'Donnell is not. The easiest guy to get moving, you know, he's got his own way of thinking. And I got to be very careful how I, I work with him, because if I get on his bad side, it's, it's all over.
And he's busy, he's busy.
He's very busy with things that he likes to focus on. And these courts are really not in his purview and. I'm trying to kind of gently persuade him over. And maybe I can negotiate with him, he's asked me to, to teach tennis, possibly at the high school, possibly at the junior high. So you know, maybe there could be some give and take there. But I think so, a lot of it hinges on Aaron.
But you know, he does lead our tennis association, but I also know that there are twenty-one community courts in that agreement. And there's a huge number of tennis courts for the population of our size. Of use, and, and so if we could specify two, two pickleballs, solely pickleball. And have them manage, maintain, oversee, and really have a handle on it for their respective needs. I think that, that kind of gives them a little bit of pride and power to say, hey, these are pickleball. If there's twenty-one other tennis courts, these are pickleball. And I think, you know, with it being central to our community up, up there at Wilson Park. You know, I don't know the life of, you know, how many years down the road, whatever, but there's opportunity. Especially with, with that park being there, right there in the center. I think, I think it'd be really neat. To have those solely be pickleball. And to begin some of them, guys, it would be just to be their side about.
We can work together like we're doing now. I, I stay out of the pickleballers way, finish before nine o'clock. I think tennis and pickleball can coexist. And there are other people who play tennis, there are couples there, there are people, there are new kids. So I do not think we need pickleball alone. I, I will fight that to the end.
Stan, do you have anything else? Not so much on that.
That's all we're going to do today. Stick around, you?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, is it your desire for a motion to adjourn?
Please.
I would like to submit a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you very much for that second. All those members say aye? Aye? Big sigh? Hey, I'm here. Thank you, guys.